I'd like to start with invocation. I would like to invite Mark Harris of the Spanish branch. He's in the presidency of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. If he'd come on up and pray for us, that would be excellent. After which, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Wade. All rise please.
Nuestro querido Padre es es tiel. Tenemos gracias por esta noche, por la oportunidad que tenemos de estar aquí. Como una comunidad, en con el liderazgo de la ciudad de Maricopa. Y esta noche te pedimos que nos bendigues para que podamos tener tu espíritu, para que podamos dirigir esta ciudad en la manera de ti. Estamos tan agradecidos por las bendiciones que la ciudad nos ofrece. Y también te pedimos que nos bendigues para que podamos tener éxito en el crecimiento de esta ciudad en una manera que pueda soportar las familias que vengan aquí. Y también estamos tan agradecidos por la libertad que disfrutamos cada día en este país, esta tierra. Te pedimos que nos bendigues con tu presencia siempre. Y esas cosas te pedimos padre en nombre de Jesucristo, amén.
Thank you, may be seated. Thank you, Mark, we appreciate it. Alright, that'll take us to the roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi.
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Vittioelo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade.
Here.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you very much. At this time, we move to item three, which is the Proclamations, Acknowledgements, and Awards. We'd like to have the annual Employee Excellence Awards go first. So Jennifer, come on up.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'd like to introduce our HR Manager, Fernanda Osgood, who will be doing the awards presentation. Fernanda?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, we are presenting the 2018 Employee Excellence Award. The Employee Excellence Award has actually been in place since 2013. The goal of this program is to recognize our employees who are most outstanding. We do this once a year and we recognize four employees, four categories, sorry. The non-management, mid-management, public safety, and part-time employees. The nominations are submitted by any employee, not necessarily by a supervisor, the director, their peers, a supervisor, anybody can submit the nominations. And the executive committee reviews the nominations and then it's how the winners are selected. This year, we had a total of thirteen employees that were nominated. They were all highly qualified and actually was very tough for the executive committee to come to the decision of who the winners will be. So I want to thank to all the employees who submitted a nomination and also congratulate all the employees who were nominated. With that, I want to announce the winner for the non-management category. Margot Edwards, Customer Service Representative. And I would like to invite Vanessa Huertas, City Clerk, to present the award.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's my honor tonight to present this award to this amazing individual. She's only been with me for about three and a half years, but there aren't enough adjectives to describe her. She's the kindest, nicest, respectful, dependable person I know. It's been an honor working with her. She's been here with me three and a half years, but I hope she stays until, at least until I retire. She is definitely the epitome of what a good government employee should be. It's my honor to present this to her.
And the winner for the mid-management is Mike Riggs, Deputy Director for Customer Service. And I would like to call Nathan to present the award.
Mayor and council, it's my honor to present this to Mike Riggs. A few things, I've only been here seven months, so Mike and I have only been together seven months, but I feel so fortunate to work with a renaissance man like Mike Riggs. There's nothing he says he can't do, and he always backs it up. And one thing I've learned with Mike is if he says "okay" when you bring an idea up, it's never "no," it's "okay." That usually means you better check what you're gonna do. A good example of this is when we had those storms back in August. I came out, I thought I was gonna be a hero, I was gonna bring some drinks to the guys. They're working hard putting these things up. And the first guy I see is Mike in a ditch with a little saw, trying to cut out a little tree. And that's just the kind of leader he is and the kind of servant he is for our community. And I think everybody on our staff would back that up. But probably his greatest accomplishment was this man, this mountain of a man got into my Prius Sea, which is about as big as this podium, and he folded himself in there and got back out. So I feel so fortunate to work with him and to have him as, I actually feel like I work for him because he's getting so much done, I just need to get things out of the way. So Mike, well deserved. I'm glad that you're getting this this year and it's my honor to present it to you.
And the winner for the public safety category is Jorge del Muro. He's a firefighter. Unfortunately, he's not able to be with us tonight, but Chief Brady Lefler was gonna say some words regarding George.
Honorable Mayor, Counselor, he was babysitting tonight, so he was out of commission. But Jorge is one of those guys that came on the department and he has just got the best attitude, the most positive attitude. But what really set him apart was he took on probably the worst job in the fire department, which is the Uniform Manager Committee. He does it all. It is a thankless position, but he handled it with grace and all the problems that came along with it. He is well deserving of this award.
And last, in our part-time category, Kathy Erwin, Customer Service Representative.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Kathy has been with me for the most part of the last eleven years. She left me for a couple of years, came back. Kathy knows everything and everybody in this city. She's excellent for the front desk. She's worked multiple departments, she's so knowledgeable, detail-oriented, I mean, very detail-oriented, very reliable, dependable. She's sick and she came in today, so it just shows you how reliable she is. And she loves the city of Maricopa, I hope to have her for a lot more years. I know she says she's gonna stay until she's eighty, so we'll see. But it's my honor to present this to Kathy. And I'm so happy that I had two of my staff members from my department nominated for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, thank you councilmembers, and congratulations again to the winners and the employees who are nominated.
Thank you, congratulations. At this time, we'd like to move to the, mine is dead. Sorry, we're suffering technical difficulties tonight. There we go, we're back, I think. Hello? There we go. Okay, so go ahead and invite up Chief Lefler to come on up and do the firefighter penning ceremony. Chief?
Mayor and council, I have the distinct honor to introduce to you six of our newest firefighters. They actually were a little behind, they came on last November, last November of seventeen, excuse me. And if I could have the following people please come up. Jay Boss, Adam Wilson, Ben Foster, Jeffrey Fuller, Ben Blanco, and Anthony Ruiz. Let me tell you a little bit about them. Jay Boss was with the Buckeye Valley Fire District and a firefighter EMT since 2015. He is currently assigned to Engine 574A shift. And his father, Dennis Boss, who is a retired detective for Milwaukee, Wisconsin Police Department, will be pinning him. Adam Wilson, he came from the Yuma Fire Department, where I was raised. He's a firefighter medic, hazardous materials technician since 2013. He is assigned to Ladder 571A shift. And his father, Mark Headington, will be pinning. Ben Foster came from the OcChin Fire Department, firefighter paramedic. He is assigned to Engine 574C shift. And his father, David Foster, will be pinning. Jeffrey Fuller came from American Medical Response. He served Maricopa and surrounding area as an EMT since 2011. He also was at the OcChin Fire Department and a firefighter EMT since 2016. He is assigned to Ladder 571C shift. And his wife Tiffany Fuller will be pinning. Ben Blanco was born and raised in Yuma, Arizona, came from the City of San Luis Fire Department. He was a firefighter, hazardous materials technician, and medic. He is currently assigned to 572C shift. And his wife Candace will be pinning. And Anthony Ruiz came from Rural Metro Fire Department, firefighter paramedic since 2008. He is currently assigned to Engine 574B shift. And his father Frank Ruiz will be pinning. If I could have all the people doing the pinning, please come forward. If you could all stay up here, we'll get a group picture, please. You guys, everybody.
Congratulations to each of you. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service to the city of Maricopa, we appreciate it. That'll take us down the agenda here to item four, which is the report from the mayor. I want to turn a minute or two over to Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most of my, most of my colleagues are aware that I've been involved with water issues for a number of years now. As a matter of fact, serving for ten years on the Pinal County Water Augmentation Authority. In that capacity, I've attended many, many meetings dealing with water and it's become the pinup issue currently in Arizona. It's a matter of fact, pinup issue in seven states. I had the occasion of attending the Agribusiness Water Council last Monday in Tempe, where it was composed of primarily three hundred farmers, along with business community and politicians. What we have, ladies and gentlemen, if you're not aware, is the fact that the Colorado River is drying up. It's no longer receiving the snowpack or rain that it did for many, many years. And that same river provides water for forty million Americans. Substantial number of those Americans are agriculture people. And it becomes a real issue and will impact greatly the farmers of Pinal County. Now, at that meeting, we had Farm Bureau people, we had the Secretary of Treasury for Foreign Trade spoke to assure the farmers there that these tariffs will not be hurtful and that if those who might be harmed, the president will, of course, subsidize their losses. But of course, that's not what they want. They want to be able to sell their products. What we're dealing with is the Upper Basin people, which is the Utah, Wyoming, New Mexico, and Colorado, which gets water from Lake Powell. And the Lower Basin, Arizona, Nevada, California, which receives water from Lake Mead. Both of those bodies of water are substantially lower than they once were. And because of that, there now is in process a drought contingency plan discussed among the Indian Tribes, Agriculture Department of Water Resources, and Central Arizona Project to determine what kinds of settlement will they agree upon as far as cutting back. In any event, that cutback will impact greatly the farmers in Pinal County. Now, because of that cutback, they figured that by the year 2020, it might be a substantial reduction. And the Bureau of Reclamation, Ms. Brenda Berman, now has put a deadline on us, on the negotiators, that by the January the thirtieth, if agreement has not been reached, she will impose her own remedy. Now, that remedy would be rather severe, but we hope there will be an agreement. Now, Nevada, yes, they reached an agreement. California is close to agreement. Arizona has yet to reach an agreement. And of course, once the agreement is made, it has to be approved by our legislators, who of course will not go into session until January. So the end is getting very close. In any event, even if an agreement is reached, by 2026, Deadpool will be here. And Deadpool means that none of those states will be allowed to draw any water from Colorado River. So it's a very serious issue, ladies and gentlemen, and we would pray that the agreements will be reached and that the farmers will be able to have enough pump water to survive decades in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. We appreciate the update. This is an issue that we're following very closely, and as you said, Pinal County can be hit rather hard from this, so we hope that we're able to find some solutions. Just real briefly, from my side, had the opportunity to do quite a variety of things, as well as did most of the councilmembers during this last two weeks since we last met, but just a brief update, had the opportunity to attend the Arizona League of Newly-Elected Officials. As the President of the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, I had the opportunity to speak and welcome them, as well as talk with a great deal of them. We had over a hundred and twenty-six new municipal elected officials across the state, so it's pretty cool to see them all in one place. Our own Councilmember Vittioelo was there, attended. It's really kind of an interesting time for a couple of days to learn how municipalities run and work and take all these ideas you have and see what you can do and what you can't do within the scope of the law. So that's always a good meeting. Had the opportunity to attend the CABC, which is Canada-Arizona Business Council Meeting. Talked about a lot of different issues, but the one that kind of sticks out at the moment here is the additional increase in flights from Canada to the area. Anytime that you see additional flights being added, it's because more and more people want to come. And that's, I think that's a really important thing that we capitalize on. So I know we have discussions about that coming up here in the future, so good things are happening there. Also had the opportunity to attend a variety last Saturday of different Christmas and holiday events going on around the city. Councilmembers also attest that it just seems like there's not enough time in the day to go to everything, because there's so much going on as we get closer and closer to Christmas. One of the other things that was interesting is I had the opportunity to attend an event put on by OcChin that was a film about NABI, which is the Native American Basketball Invitational. This is held right here in the city of Maricopa every year. It's divided up amongst Hila River, the school districts, Copper Sky, and a variety, also OcChin Gym. And the idea is, is they bring about a hundred and twenty teams, sixty men's teams, sixty female teams, women's teams, and together, they specialize in a large competition. And teams come from as far as New Zealand and Australia. This particular film was on Alaska. I think Councilmember Manfredi and I had the opportunity to attend this, as well as Vice Mayor Wade. And it was really a unique look at some of these kids that kind of never get off of the areas in which they're used to. So it featured a team and a team member from a Native American tribe in Alaska. And it was very interesting to see how, you know, the decision-making points that this young individual had to go through. And what NABI does is it helps bring them to an area, takes them, kind of gets them to see the bigger world. They learn how to play as a team, especially in an area such as Alaska that's so remote. There's a lot of these folks, they don't even know each other. They play from a conglomerated group from all over Alaska that they play, they come here and play for the very first time together. So it's kind of an all-star, an all-star team. But it's such a unique experience, and so I really felt like I learned a lot about the culture, about the history, about the reasons and rationale behind it. And I think the other thing that was so interesting is that it was actually produced by a couple of NFL players, Tom Brady and, do you remember the other one? I don't remember as well, but anyways, so very unique opportunity. And then finally, also had the opportunity to attend a transportation summit. This was a fascinating review on a lot of things about transportation in Arizona, the difficulties that we see with funding especially. And I could give you pictures and stats and details all day long, but, you know, just talked about some of the major improvements that are so desperately needed. And I think that one of the things that was interesting was to compare needs. One of the things that they, one of the slides they put up is they talked about the funding shortages that exist in the state of Arizona for transportation fixes. And while we all want to see better roads, we all want more things to be easier and our lives to be simple, I think that that's a good desire. The reality is, is there's a lot of that desire all over the state, and there's just not enough resources and money to go around. I know that we all deal with the 347 and how hard that is, and, you know, we've talked many times about all the things that are transpiring with trying to make that better. But I think that it was interesting, there was a stat that, you know, right now, there is some funding and effort trying to go into the five-year plan for the construction of widening and bettering the I-17. And those that have ever lived in Flagstaff and had to commute to Phoenix or come down that, up or down that highway, they know how difficult it can be. But the stat that went up was really interesting. One of the reasons the focus is right now on the I-17 and not on 347 or, you know, any other road that we feel is the utmost priority to us, is that there are four hundred accidents per year on the I-17. Seven of them are fatal accidents. Twenty-six road closures this year alone happened on the I-17, where it's completely shut down. And the average minutes of each closure is a hundred and eighty minutes. So when you do the math on that, you start thinking about how grave a scenario and situation that is. When they threw up the subsequent slide, which I, you know, won't show you now, but it showed probably eight or ten major projects just like that in the state of Arizona that have that need right now, but there's no resources to fund it. So when we talk about the 347, we talk about the desires that we have to fix our roads because they're, you know, something that's difficult for us. I think it's important that we understand that there's a big need out there and the funding just doesn't exist. So, you know, we tried to talk a lot about funding, there were legislators in the room, you know, we cornered them on it and basically said, hey, you know, this is something you need to address. We need the governor's support in addressing this, because at the end of the day, you know, all of us, all of our families travel these roads in Arizona, and we'd like to see them better and safer overall. So whether it's the 347, it's the I-17, whether it's the I-10, the 202, or every little road in between there, there's just a lot of need out there. And so these are some of the challenges that we're facing, just like the water challenge and other things, these are some of the challenges we're trying to tackle as we move forward into this coming legislative session. So with that, that completes my report from the mayor, and then we'll move to the report from the city manager at this time. Thank you, City Manager Horst. That'll take us to the call to the public. At this time, we encourage you to come forward. I have three speaker cards, we'll go to those first, after which anyone that has not turned in a speaker card is welcome to approach the podium and address us for up to three minutes. We have a timer up here for your convenience, and we ask that you keep your comments short and relative. And just please understand that anything that we as a council don't address or respond to you, it's not because we don't like you. We actually encourage you and are thankful that you're here, but just know that it's not agendized, and so therefore we have no ability legally to respond. But we want to get together with you afterwards, or you can talk with some of our staff in the meantime, and we can follow up on the issues that you raise. So with that, we'll go to the first one, which is the MHS Graphic Design and AP Studio Arts Program. Come on up.
Thank you much.
Honorable Mayor, City Councilmen and Women, thank you so much for having us today. My name is Maria Por, and I am the lucky teacher over at Maricopa High School that gets to teach our graphic art and design program and our advanced placement studio art students. In previous years, we have done a special event of an arts festival in the city of Maricopa. The people who have previously run it have retired, and so our students would like to propose a plan for you. I introduce to you Mr. Brady Stapps.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. We, of course, are students from Maricopa High School representing the Graphic Design Club. As our teacher, Ms. Por has established in the past, students have had that opportunity of the arts festival here in town at the Duke. However, since it has been disbanded and the creators have retired, we set forth to continue the legacy and established a new arts festival titled Art for the Heart. In this festival, we are planning on providing spaces for Maricopa's artists and art-creating group to showcase their works as well as create profit by selling them to their neighbors. We hope to host this festival with the purpose of gathering these self-made artists and fundraise for our members, as well as donate a large majority of our profits to the American Heart Association. We would be extremely grateful if the city would be willing to provide us permission to use Copper Sky's premises at a reduced or potentially waived cost as a renting for a festival in February of 2019. We have not established a date, yet we have been keeping our eyes on the city's calendar, and we have noticed that there is two Saturday openings within February that, if possible, we would like to fill. We hope to soon become open to the community and give them an opportunity to apply for a spot in this festival, as well as starting an advertising campaign and releasing a call to Maricopa's artists to help them find out more. We are open to be contacted at any time at the email address A R T, the number four, H E A R T A Z at gmail dot com. And we would be happy to answer via that channel any questions or comments from the public as well as the council. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else? Alright, well, thank you very much, we appreciate you being here. I'm gonna introduce you over there to Nathan Oliat, he's right over there. Say hi.
Say hi, Nate. Have you start following up with him first, and we'll kind of go through the process from there. So thank you for being here, thank you for the proposal, we'll continue to look at it, and we'll go from there. So we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the docket here, we have Ms. Peg Chapados.
What is her name?
You'll have to ask her.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager. We're here tonight, myself, Arnold Jackson, the staff coordinator for the Age Friendly Committee, and Councilmember Smith, to officially announce that the Fourth Annual Senior Info Expo for 2019 registration is now open. Our event is coming up Saturday, January 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We're excited this year to also announce a new partner site sponsor. Our event will be held at Central Arizona College, Buildings A and B. It is a free event. If you log onto the city's website, there is an article up on the homepage tonight. If you just click on that link, it will take you right to the pre-registration page. Nancy and Arnold are going to share a little bit about some of the exhibitors and sponsors and workshops that we have. Currently, right now, we do have exhibitor tables open. You can be an exhibitor for $40 if you're a business and $25 if you're a nonprofit. That will get you a table and chairs, signage mentioned in the program, and a couple other things. We so far have over 30 exhibitors registered, and right now we're working on over a dozen workshop topics. So I'm going to let Councilmember Smith share our sponsors with you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapados. So our event sponsors include the Arizona Department of Health Services and Bureau of Tobacco and Chronic Disease, the Pinal Hila Council for Senior Citizens, our agency, area agency on aging, AARP, who is excited to be coming and new to our event, the city of Maricopa, Central Arizona, Maricopa Seniors, and Friends of the Library. This is really cool, they're going to be giving away books at the event, which is really exciting. So I think it's going to be a really fun and exciting event. It just keeps getting bigger each year and better, and we welcome the public and our council and our staff. It's going to be an exciting event. Thanks.
Then Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Manager and Councilmembers, we've got exhibitors, and they will be coming from the health, medical, legal services, veteran services, safety, security, social recreation, end-of-life, financial planning, and nutrition and fitness. Some of their names include Alzheimer's Association, Pinal County Attorney's Office, CARA or the Community Action Human Resources Agency, J. Warren Funeral Services, Jackson White Attorneys at Law, Daniel Nunez, many of you have had experience with him, Lockridge and Associates, Maricopa Multicultural Consortium, Relay for Life, Advanced Wellness, the American Legion, Post 133, Captel, Clear Captions, Finn Emotions. There are going to be free hearing tests, again, by Hearing Centers of Arizona, and the appointments can be made when you register at the desk or when you come to the desk. Justice Center, Maricopa Smiles Dinner, Oasis Pavilion Rehabilitation, Haven House, Sound Point Hearing, and all of the city of Maricopa departments, Maricopa Age Friendly, The Comment, Maricopa Fire and Medical, Maricopa Police, Community Services, Copper Sky, and the Maricopa Library. So we've got a full complement. That's it, we made it in three minutes, huh?
Great job, you guys. Thank you very much for all your work on that, and we appreciate it. That'll take us up next to Ms. Shelley Gillespie.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager Horst, and everybody here in the room. We have exciting things happening with our Copa Shorts Film Fest, the first of which is that final decision to be made this week on which films are going to be in the festival and in what order. And we can assure you, they are amazing films, a very large contingent, are in the nine per, nine out of 10 range, and we've never had such excellent films in the previous two years, so it's going to be a really exciting event. All of you are, of course, invited, and we are very excited and proud that we are working with DECA, and we had a shirt meeting last night. And that didn't sound like it'd be much thing, but we were looking at shirts from an organization that's two gentlemen in high school that own their own shirt firm, and they are phenomenal. So we're working with them, and we're also working with a number of other organizations, and National Honor Society has signed on to be some of our volunteers. So we're still looking for other volunteers, but I am just so thrilled with our involvement with the high school and everyone else in the city. It's been just marvelous. So we want to assure you that on the 23rd of February and the 24th of February, when we're here, we're going to have a wonderful event. We're meeting with the city to make sure everything goes smoothly, and we're going to have the very much coveted food trucks. So we've lined up two so far, we're looking for a few more, trying to track them all down. Of course, we have to sample everything before we choose them, but we can assure you, we're going to have some really great food trucks here. And we definitely have dessert trucks, too. So we're very excited about all the things going on, and everything's been falling in place beautifully now, and I just can assure everyone in the audience and up on the podium that we're going to have a great event. So we're very excited about that, we invite you all, and tickets go on sale January 1st, and we just have some wonderful, wonderful films to, to show you, plus we have some special things. The woman who won last year's screenwriting contest was very excited about that, and she entered some films this year, I mean, some screenplays, and her screenplay also was turned into a film. And we're going to show that evolution because not everybody gets to see. Well, here's the screenplay, here's the film it was made into. So we're going to debut those as a unit and have some local actors doing the table read, so they read the script and then we'll see the film. So just wonderful events like that, it's going to be marvelous. We have a film, The Hopi Indians, and just so many different films with so many wonderful things as part of it, and I just invite you to come. Thank you very much for your involvement, and it's just going to be a wonderful season. See you in February or before. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. That concludes, that concludes our, uh, call to the public from a, from a speaker card standpoint. Anyone else at this time like to approach the podium?
I'm trying to say.
Okay, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public and move on to the regular scheduled, scheduled agenda. Item seven, which is the minutes. Council, can I have a motion to approve? Item 7.1, please.
I'll move.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the consent agenda, items 8.1 through 8.4. Council, any questions on consent at this time? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please? Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Taking us to the regular city council meeting agenda, we have items 9.1. This is a resolution, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the city of Maricopa, Arizona declaring as a public record that certain documents entitled Chapter 8 Business Regulations Revised 2018 of the Maricopa City Code related to the update of rules and regulations relating to conducting business within the city of Maricopa and amending the Maricopa City Code by repealing Chapter 8 of the previously adopted city code and replacing that with Articles 8-1 through Article 8-3. This is for discussion and action. Okay? Any questions on that? Do we have a presentation on that at all?
Mr. Mayor, I can, I can answer any questions. I know Denise is also here, but this is part of the business registry that, that's been announced that, that council passes it tonight. The one change on Code 8, and I passed it out, and I know it's in the packet now, is to Section 8-3-6. It's regarding limited exemptions, and I think I've provided everybody a copy of that. It's something that council had previously passed regarding people that give massages in town, in people's houses. It's just a limited exemption for those people who are doing that. I'll answer any questions here.
Council, questions? Pretty standard, routine, we're known about it for some time, so okeydoke. All right, with that, is there a motion, please?
I'll move.
Whoa. That's excitement for you. All right, let's try that again. I, I need to see someone who wants to, we have a motion. Vince is the second, all right. So a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the ordinance regarding this, so same thing. This time we'll be doing a roll call in order to the Mayor and City Council, the city of Maricopa, Arizona adopting Chapter 8 Business Regulations Revised 2018 by reference as revised Article 8-1 through Article 8-3 of the Maricopa City Code, and repealing Chapter 8 of the previously adopted city code and provide for the severability in the declaring an emergency. This is for discussion and action. Of course, this is just the ordinance. Is there any questions on this ordinance before we do it? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please? Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember B. Tielo?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passive.
Great. That'll take us to item 9.3, the Mayor and City Council should discuss the possibility of action on authorizing a city manager to create a new position for a qualified GIS technician. This is for discussion and action. City Manager Horst.
Thank you, Mayor Price, members of the city council. Geographic information is the key to better decision-making. Just about everything the city does on a day-to-day operations or long-term planning relates to geography at the end of the day. In our 2040 Vision Statement, we talk about planned quality growth, and we highlight a couple of goals and strategies that will never possibly improve efficiency and also effectiveness, and to create an investment plan and make this plan for the city's infrastructure to continue to evaluate the city's land use assumptions, infrastructure improvement plan, research, and use of technology to provide services to customers in the most efficient manner. A little history, the city used to have a GIS technician, but that position was eliminated at the recession in 2008. There were just some very fundamental grassroots implementations at that time. Since then, the city has reached out to various partners seeking help, through the KAG and through FAN with Global Water. Those have kind of been hit and miss because the partners were more focused on their needs more than ours, to be quite frank. So the major goal of the city of Maricopa, the GIS center is to implement a multipurpose, integrated system that will serve the needs of a variety of users. The objectives include reducing duplication of effort in order to reduce costs, centralizing common data to unmade discrepancies and unnecessary effort, increasing efficiency in day-to-day operation, increasing management control and providing information for decision support and policy information. GIS is more than just mapping and it's data, and data is very fluid and changes rapidly. And we need someone who can be in attendance at our meetings and staff meetings, who can understand the changes that occur almost daily as we make changes in land uses, make assumptions, and there's a lot of multipurpose benefits that can come from this. I have reached out to all the utility companies, we have to hold you a place with a global water. I've spoken to one of them regularly, and had this assurance that they will download their data, it's one of Southwest Gas, the three others, such as Orville, will also participate with us. You may recall that this year, we donated $80,000 for hardware software. However, that's meaningless if we don't have a champion to kind of run this program carry forward. Also, hardware software costs are minimized today versus what they were many years ago because it's a very formal practice. So I'm recommending that we, that you reauthorize, that we incorporate those funds and also hire a GIS technician. I have provided job description to your packets, it's a pay-per-view six, a position independently lower to mid-range, and we should have sufficient dollars to cover that. We will ultimately, this position will be based in the local services, but ultimately will provide support for all the city positions, including our public services and our dispatch hacking. We're paying additional dollars to out-reserve this one, and then do it in-house, probably within a year or two. So while we have to answer any questions, I would ask you to consideration favorably towards this question.
Thank you, City Manager. One question that the public may have is, can you give an example of what GIS does? I mean, clearly you just gave an example of, of downloading of data from the, the utilities, which is obviously very critical, but how does that, why does the public, you know, need to understand that? What is, what is the value of GIS to them?
Well, GIS is the simplest form of this data, and if someone came in speculating on a piece of property that they want to build on or develop on, that property you can pull up, not only with its current zoning, its current land use designation, but its history, you can show where your utilities are. You know, it's asking, it's gas, water bill, sewer bill, you know, what's in the back tax that they own all the time, and that's only in the simplest form. The larger form is, if you can think about this, as new data comes in, particularly in an infield scenario, neighbors always wonder what that means to them, what the impact would be. Using this data and some of the new software that comes out, we can actually presuppose a project onto our existing maps and only give a sense of type of product, but show how it fits in from a height or width or a foundation base, so they can see what it does in beautiful or, or, you know, looks, a lot of different things with regard to that. But one of the biggest things I find is that because our data is scattered, we send out various messages to different parties, and then we find sometimes there are conflicts upon another. And we have to be consistent with our data and everything that we do, or we find it duplicates work, and in some cases they create a buildup of issues.
Thank you. Council, questions? Councilmember Brown?
Rick, at one point, I think it was 2000, late 2009, early 2010, with Paul, our first litigation against Global Water, they had discussed having their own affiliate, Anthem if it was, a spinoff. Ed, a man or a woman who was with Travis, he was the second-in-command before Ron became General Manager, he was to head that up. Whatever happened to that?
Well, they proceeded with the data that supports Global Water's initiatives. There's been a breakdown for one reason over the last seven years, I think some reason because of the relationships that altered. I think relationships are very good now with Global Water. I've actually been in there, I've seen their data. I've talked to Ron about the fact that, oh, yes, they have an obligation to develop you, but shouldn't want to cooperate with this, he does, want to share all that data, so we will not be rebuilding data that exists. Those will be downloaded from, I'm getting Global Water, the utilities, what we work with, Orville. Give you an example, you know, we've been trying to lay in some fiber systems here and there, so we could build for smart cities down the road. Well, Orville also has fiber already in the ground. We don't know what they're doing, they don't know what we're doing. We have to get on the same page, and then we begin to partner or act as to not work independently on moving this box forward. If we're really going to have a tech center some future day, we have to have a fire, we have to have these ideas, and worst thing I can see is we can lay a line and realize, oh, we have a line already. You know, really, at the end of the day, it's not about who owns it, it's about partnerships, and it's about benefiting the people. At the end of the day, our job is to build the wealth of the community.
Thank you. Council, other questions? Do you have at this time?
Move to approve, Mayor?
Okay. We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion on the, on the item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you for that explanation, City Manager Horst. Take us to item 9.4, the Mayor and City Council should discuss the possibility of action on selecting a strategic planning conference date. This is for discussion and action. City Manager Horst, I believe we have four on the docket at the moment with potential for any other time. We have January 24th, January 31st, January, or February 7th and February 14th as proposed at the moment. Those are all Thursdays, so anything else on, on that?
No, Council, we're just looking a lot of the days, the staff has a day that we can prepare for, a big number back and forth, and those other things, preparation, 50, once we have the day established. We will probably not be all day, probably be more of a five-hour day this time. We can also be at the end of the day, or I find sometimes very short days are better than, you know, mine, you know, you remember what the seat in the door. But we're looking for a day that works for your calendars, and if you're able to give us a day or two tonight, or if you like, we can work through peril to try to suggest a date that works for all of you. a date that works for all of you.
Yeah, so we have, the, the ones that are proposed on the agenda are Thursdays, starting in January, end of January, the 24th, the January, Thursday, January 31st, Thursday to February 7th, and Thursday, Thursday, February 14th. So, it's just subsequent all the way down. 24th, 31st, 7th, 14th.
24th of January, I'll be out of the country.
Out, okay. Marvin's out.
And now, council, if you prefer another day, we ought to work for this date, you know, it's-
Any other date but the 31st, good for me, or February.
Okay, Councilmember Smith?
Mayor, the 24th did work for me, but since-
Right.
-councilmember is out of town, that makes sense. February 7th is good for me.
February 7th? I could do that as well?
7th.
You, you're easy, okay. You, you're okay with 7th? You're okay with the 7th?
7th is true.
You're okay with 7th? Okay, looks like the 7th it is.
February 7th.
Yep, February 7th. And then if you're all here, apparently, the Casa Gran Pony Express for Odom-Tash will be coming at 2, so if we're still in session, we're taking a break and going out to that, and then coming back in, so, just so you all know.
We'll send out a strategic plan.
Exactly, that's right.
Between the two.
Yeah, they're coming here.
Right here.
Yeah, they're coming here to City Hall. We'll meet here as well, correct? Is that where, we have it planned to be?
Meet here.
Right here?
Yes.
Okay, strategic planning here. So, so February 7th, if that's okay with everybody, which it sounds like it is, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And then, last but not least, item 9.5, going to discuss the possibility of action on canceling the January 1st, which is for obvious reasons, and the March 5th, which is what comes into the NLC, regular city council meeting. So, any questions or concerns on that?
When do I see?
It's the, starts that, end of that week.
Oh, it's kind of mid.
It's kind of mid by the time it gets to it, but, yeah, it starts early. So, any questions or concerns on that? If not, can I have a motion, please?
Same.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, council, you have no e-session tonight, and so, thank you to the audience who's been with us this evening. Uh, if we don't get a chance to see you again until mid-January, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, and everything else in between, we really appreciate it, and thanks for all you've done this year. We love seeing you. So, we'll see you again in New York. Happy New Year, and with that, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Motion, a second.